I want to do the implication, have all me homes go to the place of allegiance. Please pray with me. Father God, we ask you to be with us tonight as we go about the city's business, and we plan to make the right decisions for everybody concerned. We ask you to look over all of us, the city, and everybody here. And we ask you to look over our people in the armed forces and the civilians who are involved in the way. As we pray in the name of Jesus, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat. Welcome, everybody. Welcome, everybody who's on Facebook with us. There's too many faces here. A lot of smiling faces, right? There you go. Okay. First item here is have on the public comments, and we will have a discussion here. Fiscal Year 22 LIH WAP by Symmetra Hood, CSPG Coordinator, Middle Georgia Community Action Agency, here in Warner Robins. And so please.
Do you go to voting for us, please?
Voting, please.
Good evening, everyone. I did want to open, I guess, I'm opening the discussion about our LAHIP program, which stands for Low Income Housing Water Assistance Program. This program was newly added to Georgia this year. It's federally funded, and it goes along with what we usually, most people know, Middle Georgia Community Action Board, is our LAHEIP program, which is Low Income Housing Energy Assistance Program, where we, in Houston County, have actually this year, we expended $4,670,000 in our LAHEIP program. So the federal government awarded us, or allocated amount for a new water program. Like I said, this was newly added this year. It just started September of '21, and they allotted Houston County $4,230,000 to expend to low-income houses here in Houston County, which affects about, approximately about $6,230 of our children here. We've only been able to spend 20% of the money that they've allotted to us, and I think that's because only vendor that we've had sign on in Warner Robins or in Houston County was the city of Warner Robins. So I'm asking that the city of Centerville sign on to our contract that was granted by the state, by the federal government to our state, and it's been given to Middle Georgia to help expend where it's needed. We do have families of poverty in Centerville, and I would like to help those families get along and get on their feet with this water program. They do have to meet the eligibility requirements, which are income-based, so...
What are those income requirements?
For a family of one, of a one-person household, you would not be able to exceed $27,600 of income for the year to be eligible for this program.
And that rate of justice, your household, goes up?
Yes, it goes up with each member in the household.
And is my understanding that Perry just approved participation as well?
I haven't.
Very, very recently.
They approved it, but they haven't signed the contract. And the fiscal year '22, this contract ends at the end of this month, so we are trying to get mass intakes done, so we can get as many families as possible helped while we still have this contract going on. There will be a new contract for fiscal year '23.
Are you only allowed to, unless it's federally funded, are you only allowed to partner with government agencies or get to partner with the utility authority?
With the water suppliers, yes, sir.
Okay, and we're going to take that into consideration, have an opportunity to view it here, it really sounds good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, thank you so much.
Okay, there was no other person who asked for a couple of comments, so we're going through the adoption of minutes.
Mayor, if you'll allow me, I'd like to make a couple of housekeeping motions on the agenda.
Please.
I think we can do it at the same time. I'd like to move that we add, under adoption of minutes, the minutes from the other session we had on August the 2nd at 11:00 a.m., where we had the first public hearing about the 2022 millage rate. I just got left off the agenda by accident. There weren't, I don't believe, the 18 minutes of that meeting, I don't believe anybody showed up, or is that correct?
There are, there are minutes.
There are minutes, but there's no, there's no content to them. It was a, it was a meeting where nobody attended, but Mayor Council, so there was no discussion. And then also, I'd like to move that we change the order of the new business, so that we can address the annexation of rezoning issue at the top, so that the rest of the meeting could be a little more expedient. So that would mean we would move item seven, ordinance proposed, annexation of rezoning, and make that item four, and then we would have to adjust all the other items down accordingly, so they would go down. The third public hearing will become item five, adoption orders will be item six, the home-based business licenses will be item seven, and then I believe after that, the rest of the agenda is correct. So Mayor, if you think it's appropriate, I think we can make those two motions at the same time, including having a second one.
Okay, it's appropriate. I have the two motions, I have any seconds?
Sir.
Can I have a second? Any further comment on it? I think it's an idea. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, make the changes to that. And starting with that, on the adoption of minutes, we have the August the 2nd, 2002 council meeting, August the 2nd, 2002, millage rate increase at 11:00 a.m. And we have the August 16th, 2022 council work session. I entertain a motion to adopt all three as written unless...
So...
Any votes have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further comment? Okay, I read it, I didn't see anything to this, so... All the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, all of them. Business has been adopted. On the old business, there is no old business. On the new business, the first item here is going to be the ordinance on proposed annexation of rezoning of all four properties, Council of Bird, the Grand Operations, Brumfield, Holland, and... I'll start off then, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Quick statement. The Centerville Planning and Zoning Board met at 6:30 p.m. on Thursday, September 1, 2022. At the hearing from the proposed project engineer, office representative, and several county residents, the Planning and Zoning Board unanimously voted to approve the requested rezoning from Houston County R1 to Centerville R2. Once the public hearing begins, it will be important to give the following instructions. Go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Please address all questions, comments to the chair, which is myself. No side conversations, and only speak when the chair recognizes you to do so. Remember, you have comments to three minutes, and to topics that were not covered in the summary from the planning and zoning meeting. Chair for Grand Operations Mike Brumfield will report on questions and comments from attendees as follows, my pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you said, we met on September the 1st, Thursday, at 6:30 p.m., and as you said, that the recommendation was to approve the plan and zoning request, the rezoning request, to make a motion to rezonate. The first, one of the first questions was, why was R2 zoning being considered instead of R1 zoning? What answered that was, because R2 is the requesting zone of the applicant. And the next question was, will the proposed annexation result in anyone's property being made an unincorporated island, making them at risk for unilateral annexation? The answer to that is, the city cannot legally create an island, so that took care of that. The next question was, will my property taxes go up because of this development? The question was answered by referring to those asking to the county tax assessor's office for questions about proposed developments' impact on their property taxes. Another question was, where will the entrances and exits to the development be located? The answer, all entrances and exits will be off of Dunbar Road. No road will be built to route traffic through Hickory Glen or Webb Street. What about stormwater runoff from the development? The question was answered by the project engineer, who explained about having to meet state and federal requirements for aggressive stormwater. Next question was, how many houses are proposed for this development? The question was answered by the project engineer, as follows. 320 houses are proposed, with lots having 70-foot lot widths instead of 60-foot, which is allowed in R2. House prices will start in the mid-200s. Approximately 44 acres of this land is undevelopable because of stormwater and stuff like that. Another question was, are the proposed 320 houses, all that will be built, or is this a phase one of a larger project? Project engineer answered, saying that 320 is the total number of homes proposed. This is not a phase of a larger plan, larger planned project. What about the curbers and getting into and out of development safely? Answered myself, an engineering traffic study will be done by the county, or required by the county, and the entrances and exits will have to be built in accordance with the study requirements. As a side note, Mr. Mayor, this question was brought up this morning at the commissioners' meeting, and the commis-, they answered the same thing, that they would require a traffic study, and that that study will have to be accomplished before any, anything was rezoned. Can the developer apply for an R2 zoning and then change it to R3 after annexation? Answered that was no. The only zoning under consideration is the applied for R2 zoning, which cannot be changed unilaterally by anyone. And the last question, one of the last questions was, why were the signs on Dunbar Road placed where they are difficult to see? I answered that question by saying, the signage was placed as required by law. In fact, although the city was not required to place two signs on Dunbar Road, the city placed more signage than is required by law, and actually placed two signs on Dunbar because of the layout of the property in relation to the road. I think that pretty much covered all the questions and concerns that were brought up. And just so you know, this is Mr. Steven Roland, the engineer for the project. If you have any questions for him, I'm sure he'll be glad to answer any other questions we may have.
Okay, before we go into public session, thank you, Mike, for that.
Yes, sir.
Before we go into public session, if somebody asked me why I'm working with Mayor Council at the planning and zoning meeting, because we're not allowed to do it by law, you know, we have to stay away from it, we can't listen to them, because they're on there, we have to hear here, okay, to make the final decisions. I'm going now go into the public meeting, and I'll reiterate this thing right here, follow, follow instructions. If you want to say something, go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Please address all questions to me. No side conversations, and only speak when the chair recognizes you to do so. Remember, your comments are three minutes, and to topics that were not covered in the summary from the planning and zoning meeting. Do we have anybody who wishes to make any comments? Yes, sir?
Yes. Thank you. My name is Mike Kinsall, I reside at 301 Mary Sulane, Warner Robins. I want to make sure I heard correctly what he was referring to on the council, or the county commissioner meeting this morning, said that before this is approved for rezoning, the county has to do the study of where the entrances will be, or did I miss?
No, so what actually happens is the county will require a traffic study, and I was told this morning by the developer that is already having that accomplished, he's already having that done, and the county will only approve the entrances and exits after that study's done, and is followed by...
Okay.
The county has to approve those, because they come out on the county road, not a city road, so...
Who pays for that?
The developer.
Okay. Elaborate on what constitutes a subdivision and the two entrances, because I see exceptions to subdivisions that only have one entrance.
That our ordinance states, and I'm not sure, I think it's 300, do you know, oh, it's 300 or 600, I don't believe.
Well, if you adopted the International Fire Code, you have over 30 units, you'd have to have two entrances. Okay, my question then is, there's five subdivisions I'm aware of right now, north of Collins, that only have one entrance. So my question is, why only one? Why is it allowed to exist only one? And how can we guarantee, be guaranteed that this will not just be put in with only one?
Number one, that's the whole county, you have city of Centerville, it's not involved. So what if the county didn't, you'd have to ask them.
So I need to go talk to them?
Yeah, call off the commission about why that happened. It doesn't happen in Centerville, not allowed to happen in Centerville.
I won't say it's never happened, you know, come over some subdivision, they have it before the codes took effect, before, but now it's reported.
When did the codes take effect?
I'm not sure, they probably haven't, I'll have to go back and look.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
He's talking about, he's talking about the International Fire Code. What happens is, the city has adopted those, and adopts all future amendments to them, and that governs the development plan and support, and it has to do with margins and interest and interest.
Okay, do I have time for one more question? Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. What's the status of that construction entrance road on 41 that goes into the subdivision that goes from 41 over Houston Lake Road? Is that county property, city property, nobody's property?
No, I always tell them, it's like you said, it's a construction entrance.
Okay, if somebody neglects the road and I have an accident, who do I sue?
That's a good question.
Does it have a name?
That is actually a question that is a little off-topic for this particular agenda.
At this, at this time, you have to know...
My concern is because of the...
It's the county road that it comes off.
Yeah.
Again, you have to ask the commissioners.
Okay.
And actually, the question, no, it doesn't have to have a name, or anything, as of this time, because it's a construction entrance.
Yeah, I just want to get the thing where the city says, okay, we're going to do this, and wait for the county to do that, and the county never does it.
Yeah.
I want the city to look after it.
We work very closely with the county.
Yeah.
And depend on each other, so just, we've got a great relationship with all the cities and the county.
Yeah, I want each entity to look after the other.
Right.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments and thoughts?
Yeah. My name is Steven Roland, I'm with Roland Engineering. I was here just to speak on behalf of the project, and on behalf of the developer, Wingday Custom Homes. Mr. Brumfield did a good job of kind of giving you a summary and an overview of everything, so I don't want to beat a dead horse. Just to give you an overview, we're looking to annex and rezone 161, 104 acres. It's four tracks, but we only propose development on the northernmost track, which is 113, 131 acres, 136 acres. The southern tracks are being annexed, so the developer may construct the sanitary sewer line through those tracks to tie to the existing Centerville sewer. So if you wonder why so much land is being annexed, but only a little bit of it is being developed, it was just so we could reach the sanitary sewer. Wingday Custom Homes proposes to construct single-story houses. The community will have a strong homeowners association. No rentals are to be constructed. WCH will be the sole builder within the community, within the development. We do propose two entrances off Dunbar Road. We assume that those, plan that those will be full left turn and right turn lane additions because of the number of houses and the amount of traffic that we expect. They will be placed so that we have adequate site distance that will be permitted through Houston County. Just to answer a question, the permit will be held up, our land disturbance permit will be held up until we obtain all approvals, Houston County, State of Georgia, and any others that may be required. So that's the kind of the...
Insurance.
Right, that's the insurance that you asked, what's going to get done? The permit won't get released until all the pertinent approvals are obtained.
I also saw noted on the, some of the notes from the county, that they intend to widen Dunbar Road in the pretty near future, meanwhile, that's in the area, is that correct?
That was mentioned in the mission...
Not associated with this project.
Not associated with the project, but that's something that's already on the county's report.
If they have any plans for that, I'm sure they'll make this, incorporate that into our...
The county's big on long-term land, so I'm sure they don't discuss that.
Sure, sure they will. As you mentioned, the proposed development complies with the city's future land use plan. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval. I would ask that you do the same, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Just a point of order, the additional property, or sorry, point of information, the additional properties also need to be included in the annexation, so you can continue as with the city, otherwise we can't supplement that, just, it's just, in addition to the utilities, we actually need a physical connection to the...
Yes, that's correct.
Main property. Anybody else have any questions?
Mayor Councilman Rod answered.
Okay. So we have no further comments, I have a policy question, so... Okay, close the public session, get back to the private session. All right. That has been done now, so we now go down to the form of adoption of the ordinance 2020. Hold up, we have the, yeah. Adopt the ordinance here. Right. Annexing the zoning.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve the ordinance that adopts the recommendations of the plan of zoning.
And annexation.
And annexation.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Can you put a discussion on that?
Yeah, I would just note, Mayor, just always want to make it clear that with planning and zoning issues, that the role of council is to, upon recommendation of the zoning board, to determine whether every zoning request is legally appropriate, and this one appears to be. It's a, the guidelines are set out very specifically, that's why, as the mayor said, we're not allowed to go to those meetings, so that we can be impartial in these hearings, but the request that is made by the developer appears to be within the legal ramifications for legal use, so I think that this is the, what we're hearing to tonight, as the process says, is the lay-up, the city charter, the language that you're...
I mentioned two, I'm adjacent to that part. Okay, have a motion and a second. A little discussion here, okay, I'll pause for the question, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. It's passed, thank you very much. Okay, that's, I'll go out with number four. You swap back and forth in my head. All right. Next item is out of five, which is third public hearing, proposed tax increases, 2022 millage. Okay, we'll open it up, and go into public session. Anybody want to make any comments about the proposed millage rate increase?
Susan Lemme, 219 Mason Drive, Centerville, Georgia. Longtime resident. I see from the materials I picked up at the desk, that although some councilmen expressed a desire to have part, maybe a partial roll back in light of the fact that all the properties have been reassessed during the last year, that the resolution reads to maintain the 11.94 millage rate, though I assume y'all could change that during discussions if you so desire, which, as a taxpayer, I so desire. In light of that, some of the concerns about raising the millage rate is that, should the millage rate, not raising the millage rate, but raising our taxes because of the reassessment and not rolling back the millage rate, I'll explain it as plainly as I can, are that the funds for this go to projects that our citizens have wanted, such as possibly more hours of operation of our splash pad, some better speed control, and possible installation of some wide speed bumps in some of our neighborhoods and streets, such as at Old Stone Crossing, Century Oaks, right over here, Linda Drive and Arnold Drive. These were concerns that were brought up, as I've talked with citizens through the years. More attention to codes being followed in the construction of individual homes in the subdivisions, instead of just blanket approval of the plans on a big scale. I talked to several citizens who found some incorrect installations in new construction, and concerns about codes being followed in some of our newer subdivisions, which are most of them to me because our house was constructed in 1964. So that's been a concern of some citizens along the way. Possibly more than a, considering more than just a part-time building inspector, if it's needed with all the growth that we're seeing, and all the new construction that's coming Keep the citizens informed about the progress of these projects, such as the widening of Wilson Road, and the proposed possible widening of Dunbar Road, on the timelines, because...
Well, the Dunbar project is a county project, and the Wilson project is something that is, that is on the Olympic list, but the tax revenue doesn't go towards communicating that towards citizens. We wandered a little bit away from the point, so...
Well, but these are some of the things that I think citizens would like to get back from government if our taxes are increased. And another big thing is...
One other further clarification, while we're here, we only have one building inspector, and he is a full-time employee.
Okay, I thought I heard it was part-time during the budget hearing.
That's incorrect.
Okay. And allow citizens to possibly be able to get pull-offs from, on the open market. This is a concern of a lot of people, but after talking with city council, when it was first brought up to me, I do understand that that's an issue that was to guarantee that the people who bring those pull-offs remove them in a timely manner. So I do know there's a reason for it, but it is something that taxpayers have expressed concerns over.
Well, I think too, you can go check the minutes of those meetings, I know you've been having conversations about it personally as well, but that's a contractual obligation. So, you know, no matter what Mayor Council wants to change at this point, that's part of the terms of the contract that already exists that we can violate, so...
Well, it'll be rewritten...
At some point in the future, true.
We'll keep it in mind, that's correct. And we look at the speed bumps you're talking about, I'd like to see some too, but we can't do it, because the fire trucks and ambulances won't survive if they have any great speed at all. That's the biggest problem. That's the biggest problem, if you found it. So I have one, anybody else? Public comment? Okay, I'll go out, public, go back to the regular council meeting, and I have something here I've written out, I'd like to tell everybody about. Everybody's actually seen it, it's the city council, but... This is a statement here, this is my opinion on things too, so... First, I have to say, you know, that like Mrs. Susan out there said, as a taxpayer, I don't like to suffer tax increases, although I reluctantly have to recognize the fact that we need to pay for the services that I receive as a citizen, so something I've got to pay for. But I assume, as office, in 2010, this is my 13th year as mayor, the city of Centerville was struggling to make ends meet from day to day. I did a sort of review to see what was going on. And I did a sort of review to see what was going on. And what I discovered was after years, the city had kept the millage rate down because the government body did not want to raise taxes. The whole purpose was to keep it down, keep it down. They kept it down and down. Every year they go down with the border seamlessly. The taxes paid 45% of the cost to operate the city, for the police, fire, streets, sidewalks, and all we did, such as the city clerk's office, city accountant, city attorney, building inspector, while the other 55% is funded with other sources. Although other sources are very, they are other sources. A lot of times they're things like transferring money out of the enterprise lines. This practice was continued even though businesses and homes were being created and costs were rising. The second thing I discovered was that the government body urged that the department heads did not decrease the expenses over the previous years. It would even praise if they found a way to lower it. The result was that our streets suffered, sidewalks were not built, automations and city business was years behind, employees were not getting deserved pay raises, that is going on and on with things that took place. We were forced on our second year as mayor here to enact an almost two-millage rate increase in an attempt to correct those problems. This is what we did. Now, the city is fast approaching what I see as a safety issue. We have not had a millage rate increase in years. While the past two and a half years along, we have grown by over 170 businesses and homes. We have basically been using the same level of tax monies to support our city and these new additions. How are we doing that? Keep asking our department heads to keep costs down, increase them if possible. That sounds to me what I said earlier. The department heads are great employees, so they work diligently to follow the instructions. Also, we still have a fair number of employees making less than $15 an hour. We have somebody that barely makes $13 an hour. Water Department just lost two, you know, in that same category. They left a higher fee in positions. Who can blame them? I agree with it. Certainly we have a valid budget every year, as required by law. To often, the balance of the money is taken from water and sewer reserves, something you don't really like or want to do. We've talked about that in the past, all of us up here, Councilman Wright in particular has remarked that we need to quit doing that. This year, we may not have to transfer from water and sewer or any other place because we have an extra $300,000 for aqua funds, and we had a number of unfilled positions in the police department last year, last fiscal year, that were leased funds in this year's budget. That's a savings, we didn't fill the slots. Good. We looked for full employment at police department this year, thanks to Chief Duncan, he's been working hard on that and I appreciate that, Chief, everything you're doing, getting some quality officers in that position. We must also stay aware of the increase from loss of tax revenue from untaxed properties, such as the senior citizens tax relief, veterans' exemptions, and churches and government buildings. This loss of revenue, which is what I call a revenue we're not getting, is about $83,000 a year this year. Next year, we'll have an additional $300,000 available from the aqua funds, but that's the last time we're going to have it. That's going to help our next year budget, obviously. I'm not asking for a tax increase, really not, although it's called that, but I'm asking for the government body to consider keeping our millage rate the same. This will increase taxes $66 a year for a $100,000 home. If no increase in cess day, then there's no increase in taxes for the new, for the homeowner. Now, I talked about a minute ago, the, find the last thing I have on this. The fact that 45% of the taxes go to support police, fire, and other activities of the government. Houssey County uses 7% of their general fund budget coming from taxes, while Robbins uses 52%, and Harry uses 46%. So we're about at that level with Terry, 46%. We don't have addition, we don't have hotels and motels. We don't have, we're not part of the gas fund, gas development fund that one of Robbins and Terry are, that make the decision, they come up with that, that's the next line on the sides. We don't have any of those things. So basically, my comment was, I'm just asking that we keep the millage rate the same, not increase it, but keep it the same. Even though I hate doing that, but it always wants to impact me. Now, I'm open to any other council members who want to say anything.
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple of responses to some of that, Mayor. You're correct in that I have been a strong critic of using the water and sewer to boost the budget on the front end. In fact, we did that in the last several years. I think I showed a slide on what the council believes, we had a trend in 300, 400, 600, 900,000. We planned intentionally to sweep funds over from water and sewer, but that is different than what we are discussing tonight, to leave the millage rate to adopt a rollback rate that could potentially lead to a budget deficit for the city. I think it was $30,000 and some change last time we discussed it. It's not a small amount of money, but compared to the hundreds of thousands we swept over from those funds in the past, it's, it's, it's a pretty small number. Not to mention that I think that is one of the intended purposes of this ordinance who are fun, to be able to meet budget shortfalls, not to use it on the front end in anticipation of spending more money than we want to collect, and that is not what we're doing here. You know, I, I know that you, you say that it's, it's $66 a year for every $100,000 of somebody's house is owed, and I guess if your house didn't go up in value, and I guess both of the people whose houses in Centerville didn't go up in value with that last assessment, we'll be very happy to hear that, but I don't know about the rest of you all. I think everybody's houses went up on that last assessment that we did. It's not the $66,000 there, Mayor, it's that six, $66 rather, it's the $66 in taxes and the extra 50 cents on a gallon of milk and the extra $2 on a gallon of gas. It's death by a thousand cuts, and families are feeling it. And this is one where we, I, I'm just a little shocked to find that we all of a sudden have determined that there's a crisis that has caused us to need to raise taxes in the middle of the highest inflation in more than my entire lifetime, 41 years, and, and an economy that is shaky at best. And the biggest difference here, and I've said this several times, I want to say it again, the biggest difference is that a citizen can decide, well, things are tight, I'm going to cut back on the things I'm spending, we're going to drive less, we're going to go out and eat less, we're not going to buy new shoes this year, or whatever. They can do those things, they can't decide they're not going to pay their property tax increase. And it is, I think it is unwise, it is borderline unscrupulous for the government to compel somebody with the force of law to pay money just because we've decided now it's a good idea in the worst economy that we've had in a decade. I think that we are, and have a good chance that the economy is going to stabilize, if not improve, once we get past this upcoming election, once we get into the next year, next fiscal year, but we don't know that. And there is no reason to adopt this tax increase right now. There's no reason to do it. The, the city stands to gain very little in terms of the overall budget. The city will feel the increase of this tax revenue a lot less than the people paying it will feel. It's not worth it. It's not a big enough change in the budget that we're doing. I recognize that there are problems in, in the water and sewer department. I talked with Director Brumfield this week. But that is not a unique to Centerville problem. You have city employees bouncing from Perry to Centerville, to One Robbins, to Macon, to Sandersville, back and forth everywhere, because there's so many open positions right now, because we have a lot of people who have not returned to work even still, going on a three or four-year period. It's an anomalous thing, and I think I asked somebody this week, what would fix the problems that we have other than a big briefcase of money showing up somewhere? But the, the problem is, is that even when we raise salaries for some of these positions, we don't have applications. We don't have people, because there are other jobs that are available because we have such a labor shortage. So it's an oversimplification to say that because we have raised taxes, that we have all these openings in the police department. The openings in the police department are a problem, they're a tragedy, but they are a much broader problem than not having enough money. Because you can, you can offer people a lot more money and, and they won't necessarily come to work for you. Ask the city of San Springs. They get a huge pay bump for their people and they still got open positions because we culturally in our country have done a bad job of speaking of and taking care of our law enforcement. It's a much broader problem than just funding. Funding is certainly an issue, but it's much broader than that. I think that in, in a time where we have an opportunity to take care of our citizens, and I understand that it, it, it makes it tighter on all of our departments, but my response to that is it's, it's tight on everybody right now, and this is not enough benefit to the city to make this work. It doesn't lead to a large enough sum of funds. It leads to, I think if we adopt the full rate, it's an increase of, it's in here somewhere, it's $300,000 or something thousand dollars, is that correct? Yeah. $300,000 or something thousand dollar increase in a almost $15 million budget. That's a small percentage of what we're doing. It's not worth it. So I, I think that what we have on the agenda tonight is, is a, the ordinance adoption, and we have a proposed ordinance in your packet here tonight, Mayor. This time I move that we adopt the rollback rate of 10.364 and that we correct the draft ordinance accordingly. So I make that motion here tonight.
I have a motion here, second?
A second.
Okay. Now, I'm going to rebut some of what you had to say there. The only reason we balanced the budget this year was two reasons. I told you, the $300,000 from aqua, and we had a significant amount of money left over from the police department. You agree with both of those?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, if we didn't have the $300,000 from aqua, we'd be short $300,000. Where would you get that money from?
But we do have it, Mayor.
No, where would you get it from?
But we do have it, that's...
No, what I'm, what I'm looking at is, is trying to look into the future. You're looking at balancing the budget today, okay, compared to having assets to do something within a few years. Two years from now, we won't have that $300,000. Then we have to go out and ask the people for another...
And I think two years from now might be an appropriate time to consider a millage rate increase when the economy has recovered. But to discuss it right now is, is ludicrous, in my opinion. I've said that many times, that's not news to anybody up here on the day, if they're not surprised if that will, it's a little way I just moved up there. I'm sorry that I cut you off.
So this is my opinion. I think that, and I mentioned this before when we first started talking about it, was that I, I'm a strong component of planning for our future in the city. And I know that the city has offsites that we do plan, budget discussions, department discussions, where we, where we lay out what the next five years is going to look like. I think what the mayor's explaining is that, is that some of the things that, that we see, that what I heard him say, was that there may be a systemic problem if we're insistent on all the department heads to come in with the, the discussion at the, at the meeting, to the budget meeting, and tell us what we want to hear. We don't want to hear that. We want to hear what you need. We want to hear what the city needs. That way we can plan accordingly and set our budget for them. This opportunity that we have today to, to set the millage rate as, as it is, as the mayor has proposed, I think should lead us to sit down and discuss further what real budget issues that we have as a city and plan for that. So that way the citizens are not taxed at this moment to pay for something that we believe there's a problem, but we, and we do understand, everybody has higher problems. There's not one city department that does not have higher problems. Everybody does. And yes, our city is growing, and we do understand that it's gonna, that we're going to have to grow. But...
I think you mentioned a key point there, and I'm agreeing with you here. I, I think that one thing that we just discussed at the beginning of this meeting, I can't believe we forgot that, is in this same two- to three-year period where we're saying we might need to discuss a millage rate increase to increase revenues, we just annexed in 136 acres that's going to be having 320 homes developed. Old Stone Crossing is not finished there, or not, that's not what they're calling that part of that development all day, but it's in that same area, where there's just about that many homes being built as fast as they can physically put them up. And in this same time period where we're talking about needing increased revenue, those houses are, are beginning to be added to the tax roll that we're fighting. And so I think that the increase that, that you're proposing, I understand your opinion on it, Mayor, I just disagree. I think that the, the, this is not the time for generating revenues. We, we, we have enough revenue to cover our current budget, and, and any shortfall that appears that is going to be minimal and can be covered with the surplus that we have in water and sewer, and that we can look to make, as Councilman Armino said, proactive choices, excuse me, in the next couple of budget years. But that's, I, I, I agree with you, and you brought that up and I, I forgot to mention it earlier, but you said we're, we're growing, now we are, our department's growing, but our city is growing as well, and that's going to lead to a, a widening of the tax base, which means when you keep the rate the same, you collect more revenue. I think that, while I agree with your position, Mayor, that we are going to have to talk about increasing our budget in order to accommodate some of the things that we're going to need for city growth, I don't think we have reached that crisis point yet, and I think that if, if we were in a situation where the economy was very strong, like it was a couple of years ago, if we were in a situation where inflation wasn't making it so tough on individual families, then it would be reasonable and appropriate to do this increase so that we could prepare for the future. But in the current situation, to, in order to make it easier on the city to add this straw to the backs of a lot of the camels out here working in the city, I think is unnecessary.
I had a couple points I wanted to make. So I was a member of the budget committee, and we did the, did just a few months ago, the budget for this fiscal year. There was a little bit of addressing the salary issue, and we did have some, some salary increases built into the budget. However, that was not brought up by department heads as, as a priority, and I think that we, we should, maybe we, we need to, as other council members have said, we need to address that in the future. However, I don't think it's something that we can really address this year simply because it wasn't planned for in budget. We did budget for some of the positions, and obviously if we, if people leave, we can fill those positions as well. And I'm certainly open to discussing some, some additional salary increases. However, it's, it really should be something that's planned for in the annual budget process, in my opinion. I also wanted to address the, the rollback rule in general. I find that it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for growing communities. We're, some of, some of our additional tax impacts, if, you know, if we keep the millage rate the same, it's all due to raising taxes on, on people. We, we didn't have broke, we had businesses, we had homes added, and we should be getting that, that revenue from those additional businesses and homes. And the rollback rate wants to erase that. I, in, in a normal circumstance, I would not be in favor of going with the rollback rate. I would take something that was somewhere in the middle, between the two extremes. However, I, I do agree with Councilman Wright. I think that we're in a position here where a small shortfall, like we, we'd see if we adopt the rollback rate, we can cover that either through judicious spending control or through bringing a small portion of money from the water and sewer. And as he said, that is what that should be used for. So I, I can't agree with keeping the millage rate the same. I just, I don't think it's, it's not fair to the citizens. When we just want their budget process, we, we, we need to stick to that budget that we have prepared. If you want to add something to it, that needs to be taken up in this second round.
Okay, one last thing I should say there. Councilman Wright pointed out the fact that they always knew homes were going to be in the city. But if he's, I talk about getting revenues from them, we're going to need the people, the police and the fire, we will need additional building inspector before we get those additional revenues. That's what we have to plan for.
I, I agree, and, but when we're talking about homes that are going to be built two to three years from now, to raise taxes now, to try to fund positions to police homes that don't exist yet, in a time where this economy is, is as tight as it is, 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 I don't believe, good policy, and, and I've said so. I understand what you're saying, Mayor. I think that you're, what you're proposing we need to do is exactly right, but it does not need to happen right now, and I think it is, is unnecessary. So, Mayor, I call for a question.
Okay, well, I'm not going to call for a question again, I want to just put out the fact that if we don't vote for questions, vote positively for, we can always go back and do another question, or another...
I think we have a motion on the table, Mayor.
We have a motion on the table, that's correct, okay? But I'm, I'm just telling you that if we don't do it for that poll rate, doesn't pass for that, and we can go back and say, okay, we're going to do the 10%.
You don't have a motion for the poll, you don't have a motion for the 10.634 and to correct the draft ordinance that says 11.944.
That's correct.
The call for the question would be to vote on the 10.634.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Right. That's actually correct. All right. But I, I'm, I'm, I'm the one to say, I'm the CEO, I, I get your call for a question, right?
Sure.
Well, we call for action on the... Well, we call for action on the motion that's been made.
That's correct. All right, so I'll just, what I'll do is I'll explain that, uh, you know, I, I would like you, I guess I'm more like, uh, some of the others here, I would like to see the poll well, but I would take a poll about if you did it. But I'll go ahead and, uh, uh, call for the question. All who have said aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Okay, three to one. And I hope everybody's happy with the results. You guys live with it. All right.
Carol, have you prepared, you prepared the, the gray ordinance?
Did I prepare that?
It's in there.
I did.
Yeah, and when you were behind the, sure, our signature, thank you.
Yeah, that's the, that would be, I guess now it would be item number seven would be the next item.
Always good in places. Councilman Wright, uh, City Clerk, if you'd please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have two, uh, new businesses coming to the city at this meeting. The first one would be the Art of Lawn Care LLC. Uh, it's lawn care landscaping services. Uh, it's just operating out of his house. He's not gonna be doing work from his house. He's just, is using his address as his, as his, uh, his office address, and he has attached all of the appropriate, um, letters for his landlord, his tenant, all those things. Uh, so I think that one's appropriate to move on. I think we can adopt both of these at the same time. We have a business called Top Notch Bouncers, and I think all of us thought was gonna be a company that was gonna be sending people to work at nightclubs, and it turns out they are inflatable bouncy houses.
They're inflatable bouncy houses. Don't judge a book by its cover. Top Notch Bouncers will be doing inflatable bouncy houses and water slides, and I might be calling when we get ready to do next sports camp this year.
For the record, I didn't pick that.
Oh, I, I thought that, I thought it.
When you talked about it, I already made an agreement, we did.
Right, right.
But he has all of his appropriate documentation with the Exquisite Water Association of Tax as well, so, uh, Mayor, I move that we adopt, uh, both of these, uh, business licenses, uh, as they are written.
You have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Here now, all, um, all four, uh, say aye.
Aye.
All four, same side? We have two businesses, uh, business partners in the city. Thank you so much for being business partners with us. Anybody here from these businesses?
I should, I should have asked, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Thank y'all so much for being business partners with us. All right, next item then would be number eight. Point of information, propose overlay district map. Councilor, Councilman Wright and Director of Economic Development, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. This is exciting, and this is something that has been in works for, gosh, six or eight months now, feels like. Might not be that long, but it feels that way sometimes when you're trying to get something done with intergovernmental agency work. Uh, but I'm gonna let Director Bryant, uh, tell you a little bit about, uh, what this is. This is the, kind of the first pass at a project that we're, we're working on, and we have some continued work to do. And I know to many of you, the first time you have seen this map, it's in your packet, so if you have a chance to pull that out and review, I just gonna explain some of this to you, so Shannon, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor and Councilor Deegan, uh, as Councilman Wright said, I'm here tonight to just give you a point of information on our proposed overlay map. As most of you probably, or all of you should know, I've been working with the Regional Commission for the last few months to get an overlay for the designated downtown town center district. Um, what the overlay will do is set design standards for development within that district. It will be a mixed-use development district that will offer, um, commercial as well as multifamily residential for development, uh, options. So what this map does is in the, the orange boxes that you see, the, the overlay that we will create over the next probably six months or so will address each of the orange properties. So the overlay itself will be a written document that will be presented to council. And, uh, assuming it is adopted, what is in the written overlay will pertain to these properties as you see them there in your packet. This is up for discussion. Uh, it's definitely not set in stone. Like I said, we're just starting the process now. But I wanted you all to have a visual to look at so that when we're talking about it moving forward, you'll have an idea of the area that we are talking about. And if you have any questions about it now or in the future, uh, please let me know.
This allows us to do a couple of things. It allows us to, uh, have some input on what types of businesses are built in this area. This is the area that is, uh, right around Center Park and kind of in the heart of, of Centerville property, if there is such a term.
Right, so it'll, it'll be a designated downtown.
Yes, we're looking to create that area. The buzzword in all city government these days is downtown revitalization. And Centerville never really built much of a downtown, so we're, uh, we're, we're trying to vitalize one from scratch here, we'll get around to revitalizing.
Correct.
Uh, but Shannon will be keeping us updated in this process as we continue. Uh, there'll be some other steps that we're gonna take in the upcoming weeks, but I just wanted to bring to you and show you, uh, the, the area that we're considering. And I think this is, this is exciting. This is a step towards, um, what we want to see around Center Park and in that area that has, has become so popular because of, because of the implementation of the product there.
Any questions?
Just one information. So if you have questions for, please ask.
Question I have, I notice school, Centerville Elementary is part of it.
It is, as is the fire station. Just go straight up the street there. Um, but again, this is a working map, so it's not set in stone. It's obviously not been voted on or approved or anything like that. It's just kind of the region that we laid out is what would be seen as a downtown. So as you're entering from one end or the other of House Lake Road, you would know that you've entered into this area. You would see change in the development and what it looks like. You would see progression as far as, uh, what streetscape may look like, what buildings may be designed to look like. It would have a cohesive look to it over time. Um, so that whole area there would be part of that. And of course, you know, there may be some areas that we determine, maybe we don't want to go as north as we have, or maybe we want to go further south, and those are all open for discussion. Uh, we just wanted to have a general kind of ground zero to start from while we're working out the terms of the overlay itself.
Thank you very much. I know this is not an easy task to do.
It's not, it's fun though.
To some people it's fun. People like myself, I love to see it from the fridge.
I get that too.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, uh, next item is approval to purchase two patrol units to replace the two wrecked patrol units. Councilor Armijo and Chief Duncan, please.
Sir, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Chief Duncan.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson. Um, today I come before you to ask to purchase two twenty twenty, uh, four explorers to replace the two vehicles that I'm short. Uh, last year, and that was June, Officer Neesman was driving one, he was going, he was chief of my, uh, driver, and they, the insurance company told that they'd go out. And this recently, we have a twenty nineteen, uh, charger that was involved in the ice that, that, uh, the driver was trying to stop, hit brakes on it real quick, and he ended up, it was a hidden, uh, car, it was out in the back there, under college tow. The total given for the twenty fifteen Tahoe, uh, Tahoe, was thirty-four, seven, forty-two, twenty-five. And the total given for the twenty nineteen, uh, charger was thirty-six, three, two, zero, point five, seven, for a total seventy-one thousand, forty-five thousand, eighty-two cents. The quotes for the two vehicles will be, uh, ninety-six thousand, four hundred dollars. I'm asking that we, uh, that you, uh, excuse me, uh, approve the, the use of twenty-five thousand, three fifty-four, if I'm accurate, from the undersigned form of the budget, to go ahead and complete the purchase of these two vehicles.
So, um, yep, so Mayor, make a motion that if we approve, um, the purchase of two patrol units to replace the two wrecked patrol units that we have.
Yeah, motion number second.
Second, no motion.
Any further discussion?
I should question, what is the, what, what account is the, the rest of the funds gonna go from?
This Carol says general fund, undersigned for account.
Right, and actually, we would need to make, it would be a formal budget amendment, um, as Chief Duncan said, we do have proceeds from the two wrecked vehicles. One was in last budget year. The other, uh, reimbursement from insurance we have not yet received. But we would have to do a budget amendment of ninety-six thousand, four hundred, even though we, you know, the funds are, the funds are gonna be from insurance reimbursement. So we would change the budget from one ninety-nine, uh, hundred ninety-four thousand to two ninety-nine, one thousand, one fifty-one.
You gotta, you gotta have.
Yeah.
Chief, in addition to the other vehicle, uh, purchases, this is anything that we've discussed, I think, that, that's a, these are, this is a view.
Yes, so we just purchased three, uh, in this current budget year. We just put those two online, but with the, uh.
So that was squash money though, right?
Yes, that was squash money. Officer Eisen returned, we made it a K nine hundred, and we have one more officer to try to get sworn in this week, and we're gonna put him in the other new vehicle. So that will have the fully, our vehicles to put in, we need to hire them.
All four say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All four, same side? The unanimous, very much. All right, next item here, item number ten, um, approval authorized signature agreement with the city of San Mill and Officer Zachary Eisner, K nine, uh, Fire, add K nine Fire, uh, City Insurance Plan. Councilor Armijo and Chief Duncan, please.
Yes, sir. Um, as you know, the city has allotted me two K nine units, and we only have one that Officer Eisen returned, uh, to duty with the city of Centerville last week. Uh, he was sworn in and he wants to bring his K nine that he has purchased with him, as we did with Officer Eisen, as far as the agreement with him. Officer Eisen, K nine Fire would be working together, living together, uh, twenty-four, seven. He houses K nine Fire at his residence. Only thing, we will need to make sure that we have some type of insurance on K nine Fire while he's on duty. And it's the same agreement that we went into with Officer, uh, Officer Kurt Baker.
They motion?
So Mayor, uh, make a motion that we approve, uh, we approve authorized signature agreement with the city of San Mill, Officer Zachary Eisner, K nine Fire, add K nine Fire, and City Insurance Plan.
You have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Motion, you have a second? Any further discussion?
Sounds like all our paperwork this year.
Yeah, the chief had talked to me about it this morning. I pulled the formal agreement that we have and got it sent, and Krista has the contract for, um, the officer and then the K nine.
Call for the question. All who have said aye.
Aye.
All four, same side? The unanimous, thank you very much.
Sir, can I request a picture with that dog?
Absolutely.
Can I come down for a picture with the dog?
All of us?
He ain't gonna buy a sound figure, right?
No, no, no. Don't lick it to death, but that's probably.
Don't make some unusual, just tell me what side it's on to make.
No, 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 you're good.
Oh, I, all right. All right, what's his, what's his name? Fire, fire.
That's what confused me on this, on the item on the agenda. I was going, why the fire insurance for a K nine?
Okay, fire here on three, okay buddy? One, two, three.
Keep my, my baby.
Good.
Mayor, y'all tell your, your, your.
You probably get one from Shannon, Shannon got a good one, too, probably, Shannon said she said.
What pictures?
Shannon's got one. Shannon's got a good one. The agenda item says add K nine Fire insurance. I was going, what are we doing with these dogs? We need fire insurance, I was going.
All right, that was exciting. Item number eleven, point of information, uh, transfer funds being used to pay the salaries of the officials in the local on a pay scale to increase the lieutenant's pay. Councilor Armijo and Chief Duncan, please.
Yes, sir. As it stated, uh, earlier, as I did a lot of the cases within the department, and one of those positions was a lieutenant's position. At some point in time, I, myself or the lieutenant have been working those positions, uh, looking at the time, which is one of these multiple control and, and selections. One of the main factors where I couldn't get anybody to fill a position was the salary. At the point, the salary announced forty-six, three, fifty-eight per year, which is seventeen thirty every two weeks. I have some applicants, but their job are paying them more now than I can afford to pay them within that, with my ramped up pay scale. My question would be, would you allow me to, uh, pull exactly eleven thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars from the corporal position and split that in half and make that, uh, lieutenant position a position with the, uh, pay rate of fifty-two thousand, one forty-five sixty, in hopes to try to try someone in that position to get it filled? And I would need, uh, approval to change the pay scale on this, uh, lieutenant position.
So just a, and this is a point of information.
Yeah.
It wasn't really.
Well, I think I listened to this word, but.
Do need a motion because it's changing the salary position. A lot of them are controlled and require a motion, but, uh, you're changing the salary.
Well, the, the chief and I discussed this a couple of days ago, and I think what, what he's trying to do here, I think it's, it's, you know, making the best of what you got, is just to try to take two currently open positions and try to at least attract one, uh, you know, one officer to, to, to spread some of this work around. And it's my, Shannon, you wouldn't be also attempting to hire the corporal position now, or kind of putting that, leaving that position vacant so that we can fund this other position we'll hire.
Yes, sir, I'll agree with that, and the next one here.
Yeah, I think that's, and I know you've been kind of, I, we talked about this when you first came on board, is that we have a little bit of an arbitrary place, and I think we said it's gonna take you a little time to be here and figure out kind of where you want all the pieces to go, and I think this is a, a necessary and appropriate adjustment. I'm, I'm good with it. If we need a motion on it, I, I, I think that we just, we move to, uh, uh, authorize the chief to transfer those salaries as an arbitrary budget funds, right? That's, that's a changeable, we're moving around what we're doing, so I think that's fine. I'll let that motion's clear.
So it's gonna be a surprise.
It's good.
So, so, so it's fine.
You want to say anything else?
No, no, I think Chief did a great job.
Who made the motion? Okay.
I think this is a, this is a good example of, um, how we should be doing things as far as, um, trying to, uh, deal with salaries, uh, what, you know, salary that may be below the, uh, art value, I think. Trying to increase the salary to attract somebody and extend a little budget to do that. It's better to fill one position than to fill zero, zero or two, so, um, I, I think it's a good idea. And like you said, we can address that other position as, as well.
I think it works fairly, this, this thing, if you not gonna impact anybody above you, above the lieutenant slot, in other words. But if you give us, uh, do the same thing for somebody below, then you have a problem, everybody else have to go too.
Yeah.
Like, so it works in this position, but it doesn't, wouldn't work in, uh, a lot of other jobs. If we can find a way, use the extra money, and we have an opportunity to get a corporal, we try to find the money for that.
Yeah, I think we can address that. It should that come up.
Should that come up.
Because we have two of the positions.
Call for the question. All who have said aye?
Aye.
Aye. All four, same side? Sir, Bill? Right, you have any suggestion?
Yep, yeah, yeah.
All right, there we go. Comments from council. All who have opposed, one?
Uh, I just wanted to address the, uh, recycling center. Um, there was a meeting this past week, uh, and, uh, the, due to the lack of volunteers, we're going to have to reduce the number of days that the recycling centers open. So rather than Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday, uh, from ten to four, those, those days will have to be Wednesday and Saturday, uh, from ten to four, and that's effective on October first.
I don't think I had anything else.
That's good, but it's a shame we have to do that, you know.
And, you know, we can always readdress that, should we pick up volunteers. Maybe, maybe when people see that that there's, that everybody is happening, it might overbase a lot of those to, to spend volunteer, maybe be a short, short term change.
Okay, all for two, please.
Yeah, Mayor, just wanted to mention, you know, we talked a lot about some of those openings at Public Works tonight. That's been a recurring issue. We've had, in addition to some of those we lost, we've had some openings before that, correct? Yeah. And I remember when I first got in council, six years ago or so now, we had a similar issue with the police department. And the way we solved it is, we had, we stepped back and did a pay study and compared ourselves to other cities of our same size, other cities in the area, and tried to determine whether or not what we were paying was appropriate and reasonable. As we sat here tonight talking about that, I thought we may have found ourselves in the same situation in Public Works. We have to look back and see if we'll need to do a pay scale adjustment in Public Works the same way we did for Public Safety at that point, because that was, that.
I'm already playing on city, Ms. Carroll, in the morning.
Yeah. Well, and Chief Jones, where we have as far as opening spots in Fire Department?
We have one full-time spot and several part-time spots that we advertise for.
Okay, yeah, we have what?
We will be advertising for those soon.
Okay. And I know, I know we've got some openings in the police department as well, but, you know, that's the one area we've not addressed is Public Works in the last couple of years, is, you know, it all, it's all fun and games until your water shuts off. There's water shooting out the middle of the road, two in the morning, and somebody's got to be taking care of that stuff. So that may be something we need to talk about moving forward. What we're talking about tonight is people are planning, how we can fix that problem. So that's all for you, Mayor, thank you.
Well, boy. Okay, so I'd like to talk a little bit about our police department. Anybody who's been on Facebook has seen that our officers conducted traffic stops and searched vehicles, and they found a driver was transporting large quantities of illegal drugs, substances, test positive for marijuana and meth. And so again, thank you for all that our police department does in keeping our community and our city safe. Mayor Harley did swear in Officer Eisner, who we just saw here earlier this evening. This is a short notice, and he stated, he started duty on Wednesday. After his K nine is added to city insurance, he will be the other K nine officer for our Sandville PD. We have several other applications of employment now, some have finished the hiring process, and on our slate, it starts soon. So you'll see more police officers out on the road, doing everything that they do. They received their two vehicles that were ordered from this budget year, and they are striking and ready for service. And the agency received judgment for receipt of over sixteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars that was seized from another drug investigation. So great job, and I'll tell you, you know, for a small police department, they are out there doing their work every day and working hard, just like all of our other departments are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. He's talking about the judgment, those confiscated funds, only the police chief can spend it, but he can't spend it for personnel. He can only spend it for things that are not in the budget, equipment is not in the budget. So that's something that's carefully wanted by the state, we're very careful with that. Are we going to have much else to say? You know, I guess I get a little alarmed sometimes, I travel around, you know, see garage sale signs out on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, still out there, previous weekend. Some of them stay out there for two weeks. One of them stayed out there for about a month, and I probably just stopped my car and got out and tore it up, got it up. I just ask our citizens out there, if you have a garage sale, great, yeah, that's great, you have that. But please remove these signs afterwards. As encouragement to everybody else, just remove these signs, I mean, we're not asking for a whole lot. Try to keep our city looking beautiful, I think that's important. Okay, I don't have anything else, thank you all very much, great evening.